We'll start off with our oral communications. Any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight?
Staff has no changes.
Very good. Oh, yeah, thank you. See, always people keep me on track here. This meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications, Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. And our technician tonight is Chris Ivins. We have a new technician. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. And if you do come up to speak, please sign your name at the podium and give us your name for our records. So with that, we'll go on to -- we have no additions or deletions of public comments? So public comments is for those -- any item that may not be on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to commission comments.
I have a comment that I don't know if it's appropriate at a meeting like this, but I really feel like people need to know about this. In the last week, we've had two cats killed on our property by a large animal. I can only believe that it might be a coyote, or somebody said it could be an owl, but from what happened to these animals, it was a very large animal. So I just want to let people know, you need to keep your cats in at night. And that these coyotes that have been seen in other areas of Capitola are now in the Riverview Drive, that neighborhood. So they're all over Capitola.
Okay. Any other commission comments? I do have one, I'll mention it. We have either Monday, June 6th, or Tuesday, June 7th, coming up this next week, the Capitola Police Officer Appreciation Dinner. The tickets are $40, includes your dinner at Paradise Beach Grill. They help do the fundraiser, so come and support our police officers, and it'd be a good night. You can get tickets through probably really the police chief, or through me. I think you also go to the Chamber of Commerce if you'd like. So with that, we'll go on to staff comments.
Staff has no comments.
Very nice. So we're looking at the Item 3, Approval of Minutes for May 5th, which was our regular meeting of assessment.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. We have nothing on our consent counter, so we'll move to Item 5, our public hearings. And we're going to do a little switching around for those of you in the audience tonight, because some of our commissioners live within a distance of some of these items we have to vote on, which they're going to have to recuse themselves. So we're going to start with Item A, and then we're going to move Item C before Item B. So if you're here for Item B, it shouldn't be much longer, but we're going to just switch those two around, so that we can accommodate those who have to recuse themselves. So we'll start off with Item 503, and I think we have two commissioners.
I do, and I'm also going to stay out of the room for Item formerly known as C, now B.
Very good. Okay, so we'll start with the staff report.
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Before you this evening is a design permit and variance permit request for 503 Capitola Avenue. 503 Capitola Avenue is located in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The proposal includes a partial remodel of the commercial unit that's right at the pedestrian level as you're walking up the street. They're proposing to demolish the existing residential building and add two new residential units above. They're requesting a variance for setbacks and for some of the architectural features that they'd like to extend into the setback area, and also a variance for the 80% valuation. Once you've hit 80% valuation of a non-conforming structure, you're required to bring it up to compliance with the code. So this shows the existing conditions. They're proposing to remodel the structure at the front along the street edge, and then demolish the existing structure behind, and proposing a new addition, being stepped back behind Susie's commercial building. I'm going to go over a few site plans to show you what is being proposed. First, this is the building that you see right along Capitola Avenue, which holds Susie's consignment shop. This area there, they're proposing to keep that in place and remodel it. It's existing non-conforming. It's right along the property line with a zero-foot setback. When we get into the variance criteria, you'll see that's pretty typical for that section of Capitola Avenue. Above it, they're proposing, this shows the first story of the new addition, so a smaller footprint on the first story for the residential units. Behind it is the parking area. There's six spaces, which complies with the necessary parking for the -- there's actually -- yep, this eight spaces on site that complies with the requirements of the code. Next is the second-story addition, which is above that small addition, and goes above the garage, in which the two units will, the majority of the living space, takes place. So I'm going to step back one slide, so you can see how this first-story addition sits upon the commercial, and then there's an additional five-foot setback requirement as you go into the second story. So it sits further back from the road at 20 feet. This is a close-up of the second story to show you the requests for variances. There's two bay windows that they're requesting a variance for, and then on the corner, you can see, that's a chimney feature that comes up that they're requesting a variance for. And that's because all of these three architectural features extend into the side yards, and there's no encroachments allowed within the side yards, within the neighborhood commercial zone for a bay window or a chimney feature, as is typical in most zoning. Most of the zones do allow for those types of encroachments. This is the front elevation, as the structure is seen from Capitola Avenue. Again, the commercial on the first, on the ground level, and then the first and second story above are the new additions. Here you can see the chimney feature highlighted for the variance. This shows the north elevation, so again, the existing commercial along the Capitola Avenue with the new addition above. And again, there's the bay window that will be extending into the side yard setback. This is the south elevation, so again, existing commercial on the ground floor. You can see the open garage, and how that'll be open as they drive up Blue Gum. And into the open garage, there's a couple places for storage along the garage, and then you can see the chimney on the second story, which is being requested for a variance. And next, this is the west elevation, so looking at the building from behind, there's a couple larger windows. And again, the residential you can see is suspended over the open garage area, and the two areas for the variance, the bay window and the chimney. And as I mentioned, within a non-conforming building, you're required to bring it into conformance if you hit 80% of the current value of the building. This remodel and addition will definitely exceed the 80% rule, but they're asking for a variance to allow the commercial structure to stay along the front facade and along the streetscape. In looking at a variance, we look at what are the unique circumstances tied to the lot, and are they being -- are they receiving an advantage that the other people in the neighborhood are not subject to? Within this variance, as we look around the surrounding area, there's many examples of existing residential buildings that are very close to their property lines, and the setbacks are not in compliance in this area, as seen in the aerial. Also, the -- something that you typically don't look at, you typically, when you look at a variance, you look at the same zoning, but I think it is good to mention here, where you have your neighborhood commercial backing up to residential, that within our residential, we do have standards for architectural features such as bay windows and chimneys that are allowed to encroach into this setback area. So I thought it was important to bring into the conversation that that is something that's allowed on the properties to the rear of this property in the residential area. And then also, when the applicant first came into the city to talk about this project, and we started talking about setbacks in that Susie's building along the street, it really does fit within the rhythm of the street now to have that building so close. And as staff, we could see that the development pattern of the street is closer to the curb along this area. And when they asked if we, in looking at a variance, would it be supported, we thought it would help to maintain the development pattern along the street. So therefore, we did guide the applicant in that direction to not have to, to at least propose that to Planning Commission before removing the building altogether. And as noted in my staff report, at the Architectural and Site Review Committee, we requested that they bring in a streetscape. There's a board that was passed around, and this is the streetscape that was submitted, so we've added that in. So you can see here, the commercial building along the street maintaining its look and feel as it is today. They are extending a deck over the commercial area, which you can see that in the picture. And then the first story, which is primarily made up of the new finishes are stucco, smooth stucco. And then as you go into the third story, you can see the difference in the elevation with the windows, and there's also board and bap proposed as accent materials. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the application at 503 Capitola Avenue for a design permit and variance. And the applicant and owner are here today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff, real quick, before we have the remarks?
I was trying to pull it up really quick, and I forgot to look. But in our discussions about the, with the new zoning code, the mixed-use neighborhoods, the encroachment, the encroachments of bay windows and architectural features into the side yard-like residential, I don't remember if we talked about that, or if it was allowed on the residential, since we're really encouraging people to put, you know, residential in those areas. Do you remember?
I'd like to give you a definite answer on that, and I'm just not sure without it in front of me, but I believe that the encroachments are within the citywide standards, so, but I can look that up for you, make sure.
Yeah, I apologize. I meant to look it up on my, this afternoon, and I totally forgot. Go ahead.
So just so I understand, you're, as to the bay window and the chimney, you're saying this is CN zoning, and that's why they need a variance? If it were R1 zoning, they wouldn't need a variance?
Correct.
And the other properties that have similar situations, are those in the CN zone, or the R1 zone?
In the CN zone, there's multiple examples of buildings that are closer to the property line than allowed.
Okay, if that's all the questions for staff, will someone representative or the owner like to come up and speak? If you could just state your name and the record and write it down.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Martha Mattson, and I'm the architect for the project. I wanted to thank staff for the help in working on this project, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vincent Valente, and my family owns 503 Capitola. So when my father first purchased the property many, many years ago, the property was pretty dilapidated, you know, a little rundown. And over the years, we've done some, you know, just basic improvements to keep the property going. But when my dad did buy the property, he kind of had this dream of creating something beautiful, you know, something that he could be proud of, kind of in the style of Capitola, which he was very fond of, something for his family and for his kids and grandkids. Unfortunately, when my father passed in '09, it was one of those projects he didn't quite get to. But through the years, you know, hearing him talk about the property, and what he wanted to do, and how much he enjoyed this area, our family is just really excited to be able to create something really nice for ourselves and for all of Capitola to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valente. Any questions of the --
Thank you.
These are more for the architect, or maybe for both. So the commercial, I don't have any questions about the commercial variance request. There are two residential variance requests. I mean, why didn't you design it so it doesn't need those variances?
I think we wanted this project to feel like it was a residential project, and more than a commercial project. And initially, when we were discussing it with staff, we were talking about features that you would consider on a residential structure. And, you know, we felt that it was worth trying to have them on, because I think they really improve the appearance of the building. They really give the flavor, more of a residential flavor. So we decided to appeal to you and see if you would let it, let it go through, basically, being that it is a residential structure and it's not commercial.
Yeah, and I mean, my thinking basically was, I've just, we, looking around in the area of Capitola, and how things are really becoming really nice, and I wanted to create something that I could be proud of, and that, you know, to have some, some kind of standout features that were, that where people look at it and say, oh, that's, that's really appealing.
So if you didn't have a bay window, and you complied with the setback, that would be less desirable from a design standpoint, from your, that's basically what it comes down to?
Katie, can we put the slide back up that showed that representation of the variance request with the bay windows and the?
On the back.
I think it was true. Sure. Okay, do we have any more questions of architect or the applicant? Okay, well, thank you. We're going to bring this back and have some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this, before we bring it back to?
Hi. My name is Sandy Pensinger, and I live at 500 Oak Drive, but we also own 502 Oak Drive, which is directly behind this project. First thing I want to say is, I took part in Vision Capitola, and part of, the most important thing to most people in this town is that it remains friendly, with a small-town feeling, strong neighborhood identity, and down the list a couple, it's a charming village. And so, when I looked at this project, intimate was not the first thing on my mind. I think it's a massive scale compared to the houses around it. I believe it's 2,800 square feet, or almost 2,800 square feet. It's a duplex, and it's got a commercial component as well. So the lot is mostly covered with roof and building and cement, or paving. And I'd like, I'd really like to see that it reduce, reduces the size, not only in height, but in lot coverage, because the, the height comes up, their living room is going to look directly into 502's bedroom, our kitchen, our bathroom, and our, our living room. So they're going to be able to see right into our house. They're putting in some trees, but they're fairly small trees. They're like orange trees and things like that. So, and they're also, they're buying small trees, and they should be buying large trees to begin with, large box trees. Another big concern of ours is the permeability of the soil on the project. Probably before these people owned the house, there was a fellow there who fixed cars. I've, I've lived there since 1977, and my husband's been there since 1968, and his uncle lived there before him. So they poured oil on the soil, which came into my garden, which was never remediated. So I believe that the soil needs to be remediated, because there was, they were fixing cars and pouring the oil on the dirt. There is runoff going down that Blue Gum hill, and we saw that during, when the storm drain went out, and the lady at the bottom of the hill, I was, I, I had to leave work, get some milk crates and boxes and things, and help her box up her stuff, because the water was rushing down Blue Gum, as well as from the storm drain, and put all of her sylphas and things up on crates. So all of those houses down there had water running underneath them. So in a, in a big storm, there, with a big roof like that, and a big, a lot of new paving, there's going to be a lot more runoff, and so that's why we want to see the permeability. There's eight parking spaces. I don't believe there's eight parking spaces there right now. I believe there's three. And so it's a huge difference in the number of parking spaces there. And I, I'd like to see, maybe three would be great, but, but eight seems like a huge increase for us. There's also a concern for daylight. My garden is going to be impacted by the amount of heights on that building, that they're going to take our morning light from us. In addition, there's environmental impact. Water usage is going to be higher if there's two units there instead of one, and I don't know if that was even considered in, in the application. So basically, I believe that this building is not compatible with our neighborhood. Most of our houses are under 1,000 square feet. If this is going to be 2,800 square feet, that's doubling the average house in our neighborhood. And I'd like to see this be more in line with a residential area, and not a developer's dream. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't get your name.
Sandy Pensinger.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Anybody else that would like to speak about this project?
My name is, my name is Edwin Maybe. I'm Sandy's husband. I've been living in Capitola since '67, been vacationing in this town since I was a child. And I've seen changes in Capitola. Everything gets bigger and bigger in all the houses, and this is definitely a much bigger structure than any, anything else in the neighborhood, I can tell. If they want to build that big, they must have a reason for it. If it's going to be a resident, if it's just going to be a vacation, a rental forever and ever, it's just going to impact more traffic in our neighborhood. And, and up Blue Gum Avenue, I have a few lists of questions for the architect, because looking at the parking, there's, plenty of parking, but there's no physical storage space for like bicycles, other toys and stuff like that. Where are they going to put all those things when they, people do move in?
Yeah, this isn't really designed for you to have a conversation, but, yeah, if you want to just address your concerns, then we can.
Okay. The next question is, and that's concern is, in the structure, looking at the drawings, if there's a fire in the house, the only way it is down the stairs. If the stairs are blocked, how do they get it out of the house? Up to and down the second story? How do they egress from the house? Is that a concern for the planning department? Now, how do you safely get out of a house that's on fire and you can't get out the stairs on a second story? That was another question for you. And when we remodeled our house, our rental place, we had to keep it four feet, everything four feet from the property line. And now, we did, on 502, we remodeled that house, had to move the house, whole house over a whole foot when we did it, just so we could keep them in compliance. They're asking for a variation on that, too. It's sort of not facing our property, but it's facing, actually, called north side of the house, the north side of the house, towards the existing neighbor's house there, but I don't know if they're going to speak up about it or not. And facing west, there is, where the living room is and the bay window is, is going to look, those windows are pretty good-sized, and it will look into our garden and directly into our rental's bedroom. You know, there'll be clear view of that, and I was hoping they could reduce the size of windows and not have a bay window on that side, just so you just don't look into somebody's neighbor's bedroom all the time, you know, if, if that's a problem or not. That's, that's your decision, if that's still okay. And then looking at the stairways, how they haven't designed their, like a Z flow or S flow, how are they, how are they going to get large pieces of furniture and stuff into the second story? I don't see how that's going to be practical at all. You got like three feet in, four feet in, you gotta turn 90 degrees, go up the stairs, and turn 90 degrees again, some more stairs to get into the, the larger unit. So I don't know if that's been concerned, if that is a concern for the architect, or the owner, or stuff like that, or how they're going to get the stuff into the house once they do move in. I don't, on the drawings, I see no place for like water heaters and stuff like that called out. You know, where, how's the, what's the system? You know, there's space for washer and dryers, but there's no, no mention of water heaters and stuff like that, space being used for that inside the structure in the residence. And what type of heating, it's not really clear, you know, if it's, you know. Now, next question is, Santa Cruz County has outlawed any more fireplaces, I thought. Now they're putting, they're proposing to put fireplaces into this house. That's still an open thing for fireplaces in Capitola? You can have burning, wood-burning stoves and stuff in Capitola? I don't know if that's appropriate anymore or not. You can have, as you can have gas logs, but you probably can't have a wood-burning stove. And do they need a such a massive fire chimney? It's not, none, that chimney in the rear is only going to be seen by us, but not by the rest of the neighborhood. So it would be a big, big structure just for us to look at, and nobody else in the world is ever going to see it. So I don't think it's a necessary thing, addition to the house, to put a fireplace that fast. It could be just a pipe coming out the top, but the wood-burning stove would be more appropriate, in my opinion, for that. And another concern is the drainage of the property. On the drainage plan, the water all drains towards our property on that part of the house. And that, I don't think that's appropriate. We had a house that, such a large square foot, the roof's going to drain down the drain pipes and drain to our house. And, and if you look at our little house, on our 500-square-foot roof, in an inch of rain, we get over 500 gallons of water. So we're, in, you know, we get three inches of rain on that large structure, you're probably going to have 1,000 gallons of water trying to drain into our property. And I would appreciate if they could put some kind of drainage system to drain it, collect that water and drain it out to either, to Capitola Avenue or to Blue Gum, or if the neighbors want that water running down their driveway either. So it's, it's, and the other question I'd like to talk with the architect, eventually, if they do replace the fence between our two properties, it needs to be replaced, and we'd like to split the cost of doing that, if we want to proceed with that, too. Other than that, that's my little list of things.
Thank you. That was a generous of you, sharing the cost of the fence. So I don't know if we want to let the, if you want to try to address some of those concerns before we move on?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, there are actually seven parking spaces. And we basically follow the city requirements for parking, and that's something, when you're designing a project in the city of Capitola, you are required to have a specific number of parking spaces based on the project that you're doing. So those are required spaces. The, the elevation actually, in the rear of the property, which faces onto your property, is actually, the maximum height of the structure is 23 feet, one inch. Now, that is even lower than what is required in the residential zone, which I believe is 25 feet, Katie? And in this zone, it's actually 27 feet. So we are way under height in the, especially in the back of the, of the property, which faces onto those two residences, which, which they're, they're discussing. Also, we maintain a 20-foot setback from the back of our building to the neighbor fence, and that is actually more than you would have in a residential zone, as I believe. So the 20 feet is actually a pretty substantial setback at Capitola. We are providing trees there, you know, and we certainly put in what, you know, we can certainly discuss with landscape architect, putting in larger box trees, if that, that's an issue. The other thing I wanted to address is that we do have a civil engineer on this project, Richard Irish, R.I. Engineering. We have increased the permeability of the site. We have added a lot of vegetation, which was not there before. So, and we are going to be using permeable concrete in many areas. We are not directing water to other properties. That's never a good thing. That's never a good thing to do. Um, and, um, in terms of issues like two-story, uh, egress, et cetera, et cetera, heating, watering, this project follows a UBC code. So we haven't done anything which is not to code, um, the residential building code. Um, we have, uh, endeavored to make this a residential building, to feel, uh, not, uh, to feel small in scale. And actually, um, when you look at the heights, they are all under the twenty-seven feet which we were allowed. Um, and, uh, we really appreciate the offer of the Good Neighbor Fence. Um, I think that's, uh, very, very kind of you. Um, we, we were, uh, thinking that that would be something that we would do, but, uh, we definitely would want to talk to you about what would work well for you. Um, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Katie, do we have, we, they talked about the shadowing, um, study, was that done or is there any information on that?
That, that was not provided, it was discussed, but, um...
The, the, the main shadowing, I don't think their, their property's going to be shadowed at all. We're twenty feet away. And as I said, it's twenty-three feet tall. So, um, I really don't, don't think that's going to be an issue in terms of sun for them. Um, and again, they're trees for privacy screening. Uh, and twenty feet, a twenty-foot rear yard setback, which is a really healthy setback, especially in the city of Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with, with, if that's all, then I'll bring this back to the plan.
I have one more question, and I'm sorry, I'll let you sit down first. Um, the question about the heating, what kind of heating are, is?
They're, they're actually, um, right along the, the, the first floor, there's a, there's an area there which, uh, provides for water heaters and for, uh, most likely we'll do forestier unit, or we might do radiant. Uh, radiant is really wonderful heat in this area and that really doesn't require, uh, ducting or, uh, it's a smaller scale heating.
So the, the fireplace is not going to be?
The, the fireplace is going to be gas units. They will not be wood burning fireplaces.
They will not be wood burning?
They will not be. And they're, you know, we are required now by code for everything to meet EPA standards, so that should not be an issue at all.
Good, hopefully that, go ahead sir.
Is there any, any reason, is there any reason you can't just put a normal stove pipe up tight instead of a great big huge chimney?
You know what, I, you know what sir, I, we'll bring this back and I'll let you guys two discuss that later. I'm sure because she wants to make the house like, like it has some style and decor, so that may be a reason, but we'll let you talk about that. So thank you for trying to explain some of those issues there. Uh, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and we'll bring it back to the board.
I have two quick questions for staff and then I'll let you, you go through your comments. Um, our staff report says that it's twenty-six feet, six inches tall, and she's saying it's twenty-three. Can you?
Sure. Um, when we measure, we measure around the perimeter of the building. So when we did our measurements around the perimeter of the building, at one point there was a measurement of twenty-six feet, six inches. Um, and I'm, the difference might be that they're bringing up grade after that I wasn't aware of, but I, I can't, but it is within the height.
Maybe I should answer that.
Go, go ahead.
Okay.
I, I'm talking specifically, because their concern is, they are, you know, they're facing onto the back elevation. And because of the way the grade goes, that back elevation is much higher than say you would have on the street. So on that rear elevation that's facing them, the maximum height is twenty-three foot one. But on the project, it is higher if you're looking at different, if you're taking that measurement, say, down towards the street, it does, it definitely gets higher. What I was addressing was what they are facing in terms of height. Plus I have to add that it's a hip roof going back. So actually for them, the structure goes like this, you know, to about, you know, eighteen feet, and then it sheds back. So, to the twenty-three feet height at that elevation specifically.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does, thank you. I, I figured that was probably the answer, that had to do with the grading around the back. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Go ahead. I don't have any more.
So you want to, uh, where do you comment?
Um, I want to absorb the answer to my question and let you comment and then I'll jump in, okay?
So I'll start. I think this is a nice improvement, uh, to what's existing there for sure. And, uh, overall, a really good project. Uh, I'm going to focus on the variances. Um, I really don't have an issue with commercial variance, which is just remodeling what's there right now. I've, I'm struggling with the two residential variances and my thinking on that, I'd like to hear the others, is, well, I agree with the neighbors that this is a big, uh, a lot of structure on a four thousand foot lot. If this were in residential zoning, you would not be able to do two units and a commercial unit on this residential lot. So they're getting the benefit of the CN zoning and I just have a hard time, variances are, the, the requirements for variances are very strict, it's my state law. I have a hard time really seeing the justification for the side yard and the fireplace, which is really a zero clearance fireplace, that's really just an architectural design feature. Um, so I have a difficult time, uh, supporting those two variances. Otherwise, uh, I'm fine with the project.
Hmm. Um, I always have an issue with variances, just plain because they're variances. When I look at the board and I see the bay window on the side, it doesn't seem to me to be, it, it seems to me to be more of an articulation on the side than it does and, um, a protrude, protrusion if you will. The chimney however, is an issue because it's really sort of massive, the way that it's been designed. If it were perhaps smaller, it wouldn't be such a big deal, but as an architectural feature, I'm just wondering, um, if it would be possible to incorporate it into the structure so it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be a variance. I really, really like the design of the house and it meets with one of our, in Capitola, one of our big major goals, which is articulation. So it's not just a box, which again is when, when I look at a bay window, it, it's either going to be a flat wall or it's going to have a small, it's not a very deep bay window. Um, so I don't have a problem with the bay window on the side. The bay window on the back is the one that I believe the neighbors are most concerned with looking into there. And I would like to see that window move, go away or, or not protrude at all. Um, so I have an issue with the back bay window and the chimney, but I don't have an issue with the side bay window and I don't know if, it's still a variance. But when you're looking at the building, it's either a big flat side or an articulated side, and I think that window architecturally looks good with the rest of the building. As for the size, the mass and scale, if you go back to the variances that we're looking at, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong staff, but it's my understanding that that meets our, our current codes, which have been shrinking over, over time. And even though there are buildings around it that are smaller, they also have the opportunity to meet the same setbacks that this house without the bay window and the, and the chimney are meeting. So it's, twenty feet is a, a long way for it to really cause issues for the, the residents in the back. And I think when we set the limits on our code, we take a lot of that into consideration. I don't think it's big enough to require a daylight study, um, based on its design. So I don't have any issues with the, the overall design and the side bay window. I would not support the chimney as it is designed and that back bay window I'd like to see go away.
So now, the back bay window is not a variance issue, correct? That's?
It is, isn't it?
The back bay window is in the, the one off the, okay, I see.
Yeah, the one on the left.
Is it because of the second story setback, is that the?
That one's because it's in the twenty-foot setback for the rear yard.
Oh, the twenty-foot.
The two, um, on the side are because they're in the additional setback area when you go from four feet to six feet because it's second story.
Yeah, I, so the, the whole variance issue, you know, one of, one of the, we always talking about, uh, legal non-conforming and what's in the area, but the only way we're going to get legal conforming to, is to, um, look at not approving some of these variances, otherwise we're just going to continue down the same path. Architecturally, I think the place, uh, is outstanding. I think it meets, uh, really the intent of what we're looking for, for the general plan of having, uh, in that CN area, of having the commercial below the residences. I think the architecture is, uh, is really nice. I also struggle with the variance, um, issues and while I see the, you know, and it's easy for me sometimes to look at justify it because the, the bay window on the, um, that would be the north elevation does not extend below the, uh, the eve or the first, uh, the first floor roof, shed roof there. I don't know, it doesn't really probably show it from that, right there. Now, that, that bay window, does that stick out beyond the eve or the, I, it's hard to tell, I was looking at the, uh...
The board, it doesn't look like it, it does. It looks like it's an unusual bay window.
It's under the eve.
Yeah. Um, and also with the chimney, I, you know, it is, it is kind of a massive, and the interesting part to me is, from a visual aspect, I don't know, only when you pull into, I guess, the rear of the structure would you really notice that. Um, I don't even know if the neighbors would notice it too much because of the distance for the parking area to the back fence is such a great area, but, um, so when it comes to the variances, I, I'm really struggling looking for a reason to approve it. Um, only because I don't see, I mean, you know, it's interesting, meeting after meeting, we talk about the lots and being, you know, of a such, uh, shape and size that it may, you know, make it difficult for the occupants to have a building that they want. But in this case, I don't know if that's really the case. And, um, I'm just, uh, not sure that I could move forward the variance portions of this. The rest of the structure I think is great, I think it's a great asset and I think it's really what we're trying to develop along that Capitola Avenue there.
Commercial variance, are you, were you addressing?
The commercial variance, I, I think, I, I don't have an issue, I'm sorry, you're right. With commercial variance, I do, I do not have an issue. It's, uh, only those residential variances.
Yeah, the existing commercial variance, I have no issue with it. It is very much in line with the properties along that corridor and it's, um, very encouraging pedestrian walkability and everything that we, we want, so.
So I don't, that's really all I have. I got, just the variances, I, I'm having a reason to justify them.
So I'll try a motion and we can discuss it more then if we want, if it gets a second, which is to approve the project, to approve the request for variance as to the commercial, but to deny the request for variances as to the residential.
Okay.
I would love to see the bay window on that side stay because I, I like it, but I will second the motion as stated.
Okay, and I, I agree, I, I think, um, they could do something with that window. I mean, you do great work, so I'm sure you can come up with some type of, uh, architectural feature to make it stand out. And it's hardly visible driving down the street, to be honest with you. But, um, so we have a first and a second. Uh, if there's no other discussion, then I'll just call for the vote and, uh, all those approval?
Aye.
Good, it looks like you have a project minus the variances, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your input tonight. Okay, with that, we're going to move to item five C, which is eighteen ninety Wharf Road.
Does Susan come back in for this one?
And yes, I think we can call Susan back in for, uh, this item. So as Commissioner Westman works her way back into the room, we're going to be looking at eighteen ninety Wharf Road, um, item five C. Okay, so, oh, Ryan's doing the staff report, very good.
Good evening Commissioners, uh, before you, is an application for a variance request and major revocable encroachment permit to an, extend an existing non-conforming roof overhang two feet further into the Wharf Road public right-of-way and a fence permit height exception to allow for a six-foot tall fence, uh, in the public right-of-way. The property at eighteen ninety Wharf Road is located along the east side of Wharf Road, highlighted in red, just north of the Wharf Road and Grace Street intersection. In addition to being zoned R1, single-family residential, the property is also located in the AR, Automatic Review Overlay District. The existing home is non-conforming in that it does not meet front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, and fence height and location requirements. The front of the home is only six inches from the front property line when fifteen feet are required. The roof overhang extends over the front property line when an eleven-foot setback is required. South side yard is only three foot six when four feet are required. And the existing front fence is located past the property line on the public right-of-way and is taller than the allowed, uh, three and a half foot height restriction for front yard fences. Here you can see the proposed site plan in relation to the existing property lines, shown in red. The existing home is shaded in gray and the existing eighteen-inch roof overhang is highlighted in green. As you can see, the roof encroaches as much as twelve inches past the front property line on that left edge. The proposed twenty-four-inch roof overhang addition is highlighted in blue. The proposed roof would encroach as much as thirty-six inches past the front property line and into the public right-of-way. The existing sidewalk placement for this area of Wharf Road is located four feet from the existing home at eighteen ninety Wharf. The proposed roof overhang would come within six inches of the public sidewalk. Uh, and additionally, the existing fence is located along the back edge of the sidewalk. The proposed new fence would be in the same location, shown with those pink dots. Staff conducted a survey on the neighborhood, specifically on the east side properties from eighteen sixteen to nineteen twenty Wharf Road. Uh, these properties are under identical zoning and they are shown on the left. The star shows the location of the subject property. Uh, the neighborhood survey showed that many of the adjacent properties similarly benefit from reduced front yard setbacks and have higher fences than the allowed forty-two-inch front yard fence. And earlier I said thirty-six inch, I apologize, it's forty-two inch. There are eleven other properties on this east side of Wharf Road that are zoned R1 and front on to the public sidewalk. Of the eleven properties, only one appeared to meet the required fifteen-foot front yard setback off of Wharf Road. Additionally, the two properties directly south, eighteen eighty and eighteen ninety Wharf Road, are built within one to two feet of the sidewalk and have roof overhangs that encroach up to or over the sidewalk. The applicant would like to build his roof overhang to match that of his neighbors. And so eighteen ninety is subject property and then eighteen eighty is the property directly This slide shows additional images of neighboring homes, uh, from the survey. As you can see, there is a pattern throughout this block of homes being built close to or along the public sidewalk, which is past the front property line. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the roof overhang to further encroach into the Wharf Road, uh, public right-of-way area. The planning commission may grant a variance when it finds that there are special circumstances applicable to the property and that the grant of a variance permit would not constitute the grant of a special privilege. Staff found that there are special circumstances on the property due to an additional thirty-five foot required setback off of SoCal Creek. Uh, and this is due to environmental protection of that area and that the existing development and similar non-conformities of the neighborhood, um, the variance would not result in the granting of a special privilege due to the fact that all of these homes similarly do front onto Wharf Road and have a very, very minimal setback. This slide shows existing fence placement throughout the block of Wharf Road. As a part of staff's neighborhood survey, fence height and location were also reviewed of the eleven other properties in this portion of the Wharf Road neighborhood. Six benefit from having a similar fence height and location as to what is proposed. So the existing fence at eighteen ninety Wharf is... So the existing fence at 1890 Wharf is four foot nine inches, and the adjacent neighbors is six foot four inches. The proposal would be six feet tall, with the top two feet being open lattice material. The fence will be constructed of smooth-finished redwood. There will be a single entrance gate in front of the existing garage, which will be concealed in the overall design of the fence. The proposed roof overhang and fence project also require a major revocable encroachment permit due to their location within the public right-of-way. The proposed project conforms with the required findings of a major revocable encroachment permit. The applicant will be required to remove the improvements in the event of street widening. Additionally, the Public Works Director stated no concerns with this project, and that he would be able to support the approval. So due to the existing built condition of the neighborhood, the unique circumstance of the SoCal Creek riparian corridor setbacks, and Wharf Road being a major thoroughfare, staff recommends that the planning commission approve application 1643 based on the following conditions and findings of approval. If you have any questions, I'm available. The property owner is also here as well.
Okay, Ryan, thank you for the report. Do Newman have any questions for staff real quick? Okay, then with the applicant, Mr. Dominguez, would you like to get up and speak?
I wish I had something exciting to add to it, but I think Ryan pretty well handled it.
He does a good job.
Yeah, I mean, excellent job, but we don't want him to get a swell head. No, he's been really extraordinary because I did all the drawings and they're kind of feeble, and he really was helpful. Yeah, it just seemed like a no-nonsense thing for me for a number of reasons. I found out something the week before last that you might find interesting, that before the sidewalk was in, the property actually extended to the street, and the city had to get an easement to put the sidewalk through. Some of you may know that. But, yeah, I don't know, there's not much more I can add to it, unless you want to hear why, but...
That's okay. I think we're okay with it.
That's pretty nonsensical. So basically, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I have absolutely no issues with this request at all.
This is a good example of when a variance really does make sense, because the, these lots are not the paradigm for our zoning ordinance because they swept back into the SoCal Creek. So the buildings are all way forward.
All right, I also, that was my words exactly, is this is why we have variance set aside to take care of these items. So it looks like we don't have any issues. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application as noted in the staff report with the conditions and findings as stated.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? So it looks like you have a project. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll move back to item 5B, 201 Esplanade. This was for a sign permit.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Before you tonight is a sign permit and design permit for 201 Esplanade at the new, what used to be Mr. Kabab's and is now Rock of Petra. This is an overview of the site survey. As you can see, the line in red is the property line. So it's a unique property in that the neighboring property goes right around the back of this property. So there's really shared corridor space and whatnot between the two properties. Also along the red property line is a retaining wall, or more of a short wall that stands between the two restaurants. So as we get into the photo, you'll start seeing that wall and just realize that that is showing where the property line is. Here is the outline of the building itself, and then there's a roof overhang that extends a few feet off the building. So as you can see, this roof overhang comes right up to the property line in certain areas. There are two canvas awnings that are proposed on the front of the building, over the entryway, and one over the to-go window, and you're seeing those in green. And those are within the property, and they're not extending over the city right-of-way where the sidewalk is. And the awnings on the back of the building are located very close to the property line. They, without a survey of these awnings, it's difficult to gauge exactly how close they are, but I would say if you extend them, I was originally thinking about a foot. The applicant believes they can be extended two feet without going over the property line, but without a survey to show us that, it's difficult to gauge. So in this slide, this is really an area of concern, is when these retractable awnings are extended, they extend, they can extend further than the property line. The applicant has put in writing a statement that they're willing to manage these awnings and not extend them over the property line as part of the application. I think they were definitely installed without a permit, the front and the back awnings, and I think it was an oversight by the applicant, but staff does have concerns about the fact that they're retractable awnings. And we don't have any type of agreement in place between the two property owners to allow the retractable awnings in the rear to extend over the other property owners. If there was an agreement in place, it would be something that we could have more support for on the back of the building. So here is the awning on the back of the building. As you can see, this is when it is not extended. This is, I stopped by today, and I asked them to move the awning for me so I could see how far it extends out. This is how the awning was when I got there. So this is where the owner believes it's on their property at this point. You can see, the purpose for the awning is to provide shading for the outdoor dining. So you can see between the first picture and the second picture how it does assist in creating shading for the dining area. And then this, I asked them to extend it all the way out, and you can see here, it creates a substantial amount of shade. But the owner, as I said, is agreeable to only extending the awning to what you see in the center picture. This is another perspective of the awnings. There are two in this photo. You can see the one to the left that faces straight out to the beach, and this other one that faces towards the dining area of the neighboring restaurant on their deck. I took some pictures around town to show you what the majority of awnings that have been approved within Capitol look like. Typically, there's one line to an awning, so in the design, and in some instances, it takes the whole valance. It fills up the whole valance, or at least up to eighty percent, as you can see with the Creamery. But typically, it's one line, and I'll go back to this, and you can see it has two lines of writing on the valance, so a little more busy than you typically see throughout the village. Next, we'll take a look at the front of the building. So there are two new canvas covers that are over the, on the right-hand side, you can see over their entryway, and then also over the takeout windows. These have a nice, clean look. They complement the architecture of the building with the design, with the circular design going with the circular entryway and to-go restaurant. Within the staff's recommendation, we were recommending approval of the front two awning signs, as long as they're conditioned to keep, to be kept in good condition. Within our design guidelines, there is a requirement that awnings be at least eight feet high in height. These are a little bit under. The takeout windows, it's seven feet, ten inches. At the entry entrance, it's seven and a half feet. Talking with the building official, we can make an exception to that because it does meet accessibility code. So in our design guidelines, our guidance, so therefore, it doesn't require a variance to make that change. It's just, it's guidance, but as long as it meets the building code, it could be approved with the current height. And then also within the guidelines, it talks about the design of signs and awnings relating to the surrounding architecture, and the surrounding area in which I think the two in the front facade of the building do work with the architecture of the building. One item that came up during the review, as you can see in the left picture, there's, we have a standard of twenty percent of windows can be utilized for signs with an administrative permit, and you're allowed to go up to thirty percent of a window, as long as you've got planning commission approval. So in talking to the applicant, and I'm sorry, there's a reflection in the picture to the right, you're seeing the Six Sisters across the street. Those are not signs. But they were willing to clean up the front entryway, so what you're seeing is, they've brought it down to the menu. There was a menu in the window, and then a, I think, a hiring sign off to the right, so they got it down to the twenty percent. Also, menu signs are allowed to be, within our code, up to three square feet. There is one existing menu sign on the site, and it's existing nonconforming. In talking further with the owner about this, it's something that was on the building when they purchased the restaurant, so it's been there for quite some time. So I think that falls under just existing nonconforming within this application. I had asked them if you wanted to get approval of a menu sign, but they'd rather continue with what they have under nonconforming status. So within the recommendation, I'd like to also recommend a few modifications to the conditions of approval. I think we should add, too, see that temporary window signs may cover up to twenty percent of the window, so that's something that, if we see it go back to the way it was, it's something we can enforce through conditions of approval. Also, just clarifying that a sidewalk sign is not approved within this application. That has been a code enforcement issue over the years, and I noticed in the pictures that were supplied by the applicant, there was evidence of a sidewalk sign in those photos, so I suggested that that be recycled, and we put this condition in so that we don't have an ongoing issue. And then also adding the typical language, that if ever in violation of the permit that's issued, that it can come back to the planning commission at the discretion of the Community Development Director. So with that, our staff recommendation is to have planning commission approve the two canopy signs in the front elevation, and deny the two awning signs on the rear elevation of the building, and with the modified conditions as provided this evening. So with that, I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here, the owner as well.
Any questions for staff?
I have one question. My memory is that this sidewalk, which goes around this particular building, is indicated in our local coastal plan as being a public access way. And in prior projects that have come, both related to Zeldas and to this piece of property, there had been conditions in there about keeping that space clear, so that, you know, it was available for the public to use. It's not sort of private space for the restaurant itself to be used. So before, I mean, I'm agreeing with the staff's recommendation, because before we approved sort of the two awning signs on the back, if we were eventually going to do that, you know, I think we need to be clear about what that space is and what it's supposed to be used for, based on, you know, prior actions that the city's taken.
I had that same question. It seems like it was a year or two ago that suddenly that walkway became a dining area. And I was going to ask what the propriety of that is, because I don't know how that became essentially closed to, I mean, there's a loop that you take around behind Zeldas, which they always keep it open, and then you come around, and then you use the exit through, that's the old merry-go-round there, and suddenly it became a dining area with people and their dogs in your way. So was there some kind of, maybe when I wasn't on the commission, was something granted to do that, or how did that become a dining area?
I can't speak to the previous conditional use for it, but I think Commissioners Westman and Newman are correct that it is in our LCP that that space is publicly accessible, and I believe a lot of the seating that is there and permitted to be there is open to the public. It's quasi-public, not for private use. In terms of the seating specific to this business, I think we'd have to look at it to see if that was something that was approved or added without any permits.
That's not even getting into the issue of the crazy village parking rules, if suddenly six more tables show up outside there.
My suggestion on that issue, since the applications before us tonight are for the signs, was that staff can do some research after the meeting, find out if they are entitled to have that seating, and if not, we will require the owner to remove those seats.
That works for me.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question about the lighting, the LED lighting. Did staff take a look at any specs on that, or how much lighting it is?
I went and took a look at it, and it's more like the new Christmas light. It's just a string of LED lights. So I didn't see it at night, but it, from the appearance of it, it's very thin, it's very simple. I don't think it would do any overpowering.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One question for staff. It's my understanding that an awning sign, once installed and approved, if it needs replacement in the future, it can be replaced without any further review. Is that correct?
That's correct, if it matches what was approved.
Okay.
Mr. Assad, would you like to come up and speak?
So we have been owning this business for the last five years. Used to be Mr. Kabab and Falafel. Now it's Rock of Petra. We changed the name just to give it a more cultural entity. So I think around the Christmas time, we had some failure in one of our inlet units on the hood. So, and then we had to fix it, and then we were shut down, and then that's when we decided to change the name. And that's when we actually decided to put these awnings and, you know, change the name as well. So in the past, for, you know, in the past, when we were running as Mr. Kabab and Falafel, we had two persistent problems with the business. The number one problem is we, when the sun is vertical during lunchtime, we have a problem with the shade. So if even the tables on the inside, they are hit with the sun, and it gets really muggy, and people do not want to sit there. So we have looked at different solutions as to how we could address this problem, and we thought the best way to do it is by having those retractable awnings. And they don't, and as you can see on those pictures I just took earlier today, you can see they're extended about two feet and maybe three or four inches out, and they're still within the property line. They're high enough also at that level, as I think they're about ten feet higher from the ground. So they're not really in any way, you know, they're like, they're not obstructing anything, they're not causing any sort of hazardous issues and whatnot. They're actually quite neat, nice, they're controllable electronically. They actually do the trick when they're extended about two feet out. They actually provide shades for the limited seating we have outside, which is approved ceilings that we have. And also, mostly, it actually provides the shade during lunchtime for the tables that we have inside. And we don't have air conditioning units inside because it's a very kind of awkward property, as you can tell. So the second problem that we also had over the years, we had a problem with the entity of the place. So the property itself, it's kind of engulfed between Zelda's property and the deck. So a lot of people, when they come in, they think, especially tourists and people from out of town, they think that property belongs to Zelda. So in the past, what we have seen, that when customers walk in, they kind of clog So in the past, what we have seen, that when customers walk in, they kind of clog the whole way, when on a busy day, thinking that we are part of Zelda, and they're waiting for us to seat them on the deck. So, and then that kind of creates a panic in a small place like this, for the staff and whatnot. And since we had the awnings, that problem disappeared, because now the place has a unique entity, people can read the signs, they know that's a separate place. We also had a problem with people when Zelda's deck is full. People actually go on our tables, those four or five tables we have limited outside, they sit down and wait for them to be seated on the patio. And when we have our own customers that come in, that they wanted to be seated, we would have to go out there, tell those Zelda's customers that, hey, you know, that's not part of Zelda's, and this is for our own customers, and we had to clean the tables, and so on and so forth. A lot of time, we lose our own customers that they were about to dine in with us. So having these awning have really eliminated that problem. We don't, you know, we have, we had few busy days since we had them, people understand that this is separate property, and that's a different restaurant, and it has also addressed the issue with shading. You know, when we extend them out, two feet out, I think it's far enough to provide the shading. And, you know, we've been neighbors with Zelda's for about five years or so, and we've always had, you know, good relationships with them, and if, let's say they were to be, you know, one of the staff extended it out further than it has to, excuse me, we would, you know, we would definitely immediately move them back within the limits. So I kind of disagree on the fact that these awnings should be removed. You know, we're trying very hard to succeed, we definitely have a different business model than Zelda's, we are not, we have no conflict of interest, they have different kind of business, they're more into, you know, American food, we're more into Middle Eastern food, they have liquor, we don't, and we're really simply about food. And I think those will help us succeed, will make things better, even for us and Zelda's, it's not just us. I mean, I think it looks nice, it looks presentable, they're safe, they're controllable, they're not, you know, they don't, you know, cause any hazardous and whatnot. And I would like for the panel to allow us to have these, so that we can resolve those issues that I just spoke about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Assad. Any questions?
I have one question. When you ordered the retractable awnings, was it possible to order them shorter?
Actually not, because those arms, I think maybe you can do custom designs, but those, they come kind of standard, where the arms, they just go out, and they don't extend like at 180 degree, the arms, they extend, I think, out to maybe, I don't know, maybe about, I would say 80 degrees, just so that they can hold the, when there's a sheer wind or something, they can bear the weight. So yeah, they can, unfortunately, that's how they come from the manufacturer. Now, I don't know if they can design them with shorter arms, they may do, but that would be probably very expensive.
Okay. And the picture that you showed where it was fully extended, that was fully extended?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Assad? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Do we have anybody else from the audience who would like to speak? Great, thank you.
I'm Jill Ely from Zelda's, representing Zelda's. We obviously have issues with awnings, just the back awnings, for pretty clear reasons that they extend way beyond our property. I had spoken to Al today for your request, and explained to him that I don't really want to be in the business of policing how far the awning goes out. It has been extended all the way, and I've gone to the staff and said, hey, can you bring it back a little bit, my runners can't carry the trays out to the deck, that first one between, like, on the way to the beach. And he wasn't there, and the staff was like, oh, we're not allowed to touch it, so then it just sat out there for the rest of the day. I went out today to look at them as well, I must have just missed you, and I noticed that the one on, like, the walkthrough, I don't even think it could be extended a foot without going over our property line, because he had said the same thing to me, what if I only extend them each, you know, one foot, now it's two feet, and maybe I wouldn't have an issue with the first one that's in that picture right there being extended one foot, if it doesn't go over the property. On the side one, I almost don't think it could be extended at all without doing so. I think the picture of it all the way extended was actually the side one, because it goes all the way over the deck, you can see that. And I don't love the writing, I feel like it's super in-your-face, white, and I would argue actually that it kind of says that we are pretty similar, considering the one that goes over the deck says burger, seafood, and plump chowder, which is pretty much our menu. So I agree with their findings, and I would hope that the two awnings, the back awnings would be removed, or that we could come up with a solution where they would literally, the one could not be extended, the front one could maybe be extended one foot, and then if he wants to have the, like, the name of the restaurants, maybe that alone, that maybe the writing would be okay, but I feel like the writing's super in-your-face, and especially when they are extended, they're literally, that writing is in our customers' faces, it's just kind of tacky, I guess, for lack of a better word, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? Okay, yes, Mr. Assad?
Sorry, I just want to emphasize that, can you go back on the picture where I was using the measuring tape, please? No, the other one, where I was measuring the, yeah, that one. So can you, is there a way that you can zoom in to that second picture there? Is that possible?
I don't think it's gonna...
Sorry.
Okay. You can't, right?
Can you, just go ahead and tell us where your thoughts are.
So basically, that one there shows that it has, it's actually over two feet, okay? And it shows, and I show the measuring tape dropping down vertically, and it is on the property line of ours, of the building. It does not extend. I think she misunderstood that, when I spoke with her this morning, I was actually asking her, even if it was to go another, another foot out, that maybe it's not going to be a problem. And the fact, and I also measured, having this coming out about two feet and a few inches, I measured it vertically, and it's over 10 feet from the ground.
Okay, thank you. I think we have the information now that we need, thank you. Okay, so I'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody want to jump in?
Hey, I'll jump in here. So I'm not, unfortunately, I'm not seeing a lot of voluntary compliance. I'm not seeing a lot of voluntary compliance with too many things here. There's a lot of information being disseminated by this business, and window signs, and information on the awnings of their menu, and all sorts of things that really aren't what we're looking for, I think, on the esplanade, and, you know, pushing the envelope here with everything, really, not to mention the tables that we're going to look into. But I don't see any justification for approving awnings that were put up without any permits and extend over somebody else's property line. I mean, I just, I see no basis for approving that.
I'd be willing to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, to approve the two signs on the esplanade, facing the esplanade, and deny the two that are facing the beach.
Okay, so we have a motion?
And I'll second that, as long as there's a clear understanding that, you know, we are going to look into the area around to...
So we have our motion in a second?
I have a discussion or friendly amendment, one of the two. Condition number two calls for two new signs and one new menu sign. I would modify that so it strikes out the one new menu sign, and adds the two modified conditions that she had presented earlier. I'm agreeing with that.
Yeah, that's a good amendment.
And the only other thing I have, Mr. Assad, is that on the front, the two awnings in the front on the takeout window, it's too much is crooked there, so trying to buy it looks a little awkward, but I think you can probably adjust that to make it level, so...
I noticed that too, yeah.
So we have a motion in a second? All those, a call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so it looks like a passive staff recommendation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I request just a really short break before we start the final item, just to...
Okay.
That would be really nice.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.
And we'll move on to item D.
Yeah, thank you. Bye. Usually it's the men who ask.
Who had big trouble, one of the, I think it was Carly Fiorina, promoting one of the debates. Remember that? Was Trump giving her a hard time while she's not coming back? He's so cruel.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God, what'd you think of Hillary's slam?
She really came after him, yeah. I mean, Rachel Maddow thought it was the best thing she'd ever given.
I liked her tone, I heard part of it, but I really liked her tone, and she didn't come out...
Yeah, Rachel, it's all factual, she was just giving what he had said on each point. It's all supported by the...
It's, you know...
Can he surrender?
That's a good point. Who could possibly be his running mate? Who would possibly be his running mate?
Carly.
Shows how bored we are, we're talking about politics.
You know, after that 17 Republicans, it got a little less exciting. It was so, you know, there were so many balls in the air.
Yeah, you know, sad, it's a sad thing. You know, I'm glad my dad's not, like, to see what happened with the Republican Party.
Really long, is there any other example? I mean, that was so...
Yeah.
Opulent crew.
Yeah, that's a good, okay, much better.
Yes.
Not that I can remember, but I wouldn't... It's like a wooden box under my seat. Do you want some more?
Every once in a while, I kick it.
So I think Mrs. Commissioner Smith wanted to get the score of the Warriors game, but...
No, it's fine, don't worry about it.
So we'll come back from our recess, and we'll look at item D, 5D, 231 Espinade, for a design permit and conditional use permit for the antenna on Margaritaville. Oh, we're not coming back yet, I forgot to see if staff is here.
Wait for staff to get back. Now, they're better off waiting for the real staff.
So I did hear the Warriors are...
No, don't say.
I'm not going to tell you.
Don't say.
So you know what it is?
For taping.
79-96.
What did you say?
The Warriors score.
What is it?
96 to 79, is that right?
96 to 79, favor the Warriors.
Warriors up, yeah.
I'll watch it anyway.
You're gonna watch it.
But dedicated people, we are to be here tonight. Or sharks aren't doing too good, though.
No, I didn't see.
They're not playing tonight, but they're down 2 to nothing, I think.
The first two were all right.
Yes.
Okay, so we, whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Before you is an application for a design permit, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit to construct a new small cell Verizon wireless antenna facility on the roof of the mixed, on the roof of the mixed-use building at 231 Espinade. The proposed new wireless facility would be located on the existing Margaritaville building, within the Central Village zoning district. It's highlighted with a small star, sorry, can't quite see it, it's on the building. The new small cell wireless facility is proposed within the Capitola Village in the Central Village zoning district. The adjacent uses consist of primarily commercial retail, restaurants, residential, public facilities, and office space. The proposed antenna is relatively small and screened within a faux roof vent, but would be visible from both Espinade and Stockton Avenue. Here you can see the site plan of 231 Espinade, with the top of the third-story roof parapet wall highlighted in blue, and the proposed 33-square-foot Verizon lease space highlighted in red. Here's an enlarged site plan view of the proposed Verizon antenna facility and ancillary equipment in relation to the existing rooftop equipment. The new equipment is shaded as follows: one new faux vent with three antenna facilities located within, shown in green; six remote radio units located in two separate groups, shown in blue; a new Charles equipment box mounted to the existing parapet wall, in yellow; and a global position system GPS antenna attached to wall-mounted Unistruts, located, highlighted with a red star. The proposed tri-antenna facility will be located within a faux vent screen, as previously stated, to match the existing roof fence on 231 Espinade. This slide shows the overhead view of the antenna facility, the side view, as well as an example image of the faux vent design. The faux pipe vent will be visible from adjacent properties, it will extend two feet and eight inches above the existing roof line of the Margaritaville building. This slide shows the details of the Charles Box radio cabinet. The cabinet will be attached to the existing parapet, and will be located 27 inches above the existing parapet wall. The cabinet will not be visible from adjacent roadways and sidewalks due to the height of the building and central location of the cabinet on the roof. The cabinet will, however, be visible when looking out of buildings across the street onto the roof of 231 Espinade. So here are the existing and proposed west elevations, viewing the front of Stockton Bridge Grill. The top height of the proposed two-foot-tall cantona, shown in red, would sit roughly two foot eight above the existing roof, putting the total height of the facility at 27 feet six inches from finished grade. The existing height of the building parapet is 20 feet, 24 feet 10 inches. Buildings in the Central Village zone are restricted to 27 feet in height, however, the municipal code allows height exceptions on rooftop structures that are not intended for commercial purposes or habitation to exceed that height limit. This view also shows the new radio cabinet box, in blue, which will sit, which will sit slightly below the existing roof line, but again, will be slightly visible from this view. So here are the north... So here are the north elevations. Uh, this is viewing the front of the building from Espinod. This elevation shows an additional piece of proposed equipment on the north-facing wall, which is highlighted in red. So Verizon's proposing a backup generator socket here at ground level. The socket is small and will not be visually intrusive. The site is designed to have up to four hours of battery backup in the event of power outage. The portable generator would only be deployed during prolonged power outages. If required, the generator would be parked in one of the metered parking spaces on the street. The cable running from the generator to the Appleton plug would be covered with an anti-trip cable cover. So the following few slides show photo simulations prepared by the applicant of the proposed facility. As you can see throughout these slides, only the faux roof vent will be visible. So this is a view from Stockton Avenue. Here's a view looking from the beach. And here is a view from Stockton Avenue looking northeast at the site. Per the municipal code, a wireless facility that is not co-locating is located within the restricted zone setbacks and does not incorporate stealth technology requires a conditional use permit with a public hearing before the planning commission. The Capitol of Municipal Code restricts wireless antenna facilities from being located within three hundred feet of a residential, public facility, transient rental use, or parks and open space zoning district. Uh, this proposal at 231 Espinod would be located approximately two hundred feet from the beach due south, which is a public facility, uh, and is proposed within the restricted transient rental use overlay district. As you are all aware, the TRO, Transient Rental Overlay District, extends throughout the entire village, so this would be specifically located in a restricted zone. Additionally, uh, the municipal code requires that wireless communication facilities shall be absolutely prohibited in areas that lie within one thousand feet of the coastline. Uh, and the proposed site here would be located roughly five hundred feet from the coastline, thus it does not comply with our setback requirements. And although the code states that in no event may a facility be located within this three-hundred-foot setback restriction, the FCC's regulations pertaining to wireless telecommunications facilities may preempt the city's ability to deny a permit if the applicant can demonstrate that the city's regulations are tantamount to prohibiting the provision of wireless services. Uh, so this federal act gives wireless applicants the ability to challenge the validity of local regulations if it can prove that the regulations are preventing them from filling a quote-unquote "significant gap" in their coverage. In order to be exempt from the code's setback restrictions, the applicant must be able to prove that the new facility would eliminate or substantially reduce a significant gap in the carrier's network and that there are no other alternatives to the location and design of the facility that could reduce said gaps in a least intrusive means. So Verizon submitted existing and proposed cell coverage maps, as well as a capacity demand graph and results of a drive test in order to try and prove that a significant gap exists in their coverage. Uh, this slide shows the existing and proposed cell coverage maps. As you can see, Verizon claims that cell coverage is currently red in the heart of the village, and what red means is that coverage is bad indoors and outdoors. They claim that the new site will improve coverage to the green level, meaning coverage will be good indoors and outdoors. Due to the relatively small area of the gap, Verizon focused their search on two buildings within the heart of the village in order to stay as close as possible to its users. They looked at 231 Espinod and 215 Espinod. They chose 231 Espinod due to the inability to access, uh, the roof very easily at 215 Espinod. In accordance with the municipal code, staff contracted Telecom Law Firm to provide an independent review of the proposal, paid for by the applicant. Telecom conducted a technical analysis of Verizon's capacity finding report. They evaluated whether or not a significant coverage gap currently exists and reviewed how the proposal will affect said coverage gap, uh, as well as analyze whether the proposed design and location would incorporate the least intrusive means possible. So Telecom concluded that Verizon very likely demonstrated that a significant gap exists because empirical information shows that the gap area impacts many potential users in a relatively dense commercial area with highly-traveled roads, roadways, and seasonal events that bring even more potentially impacted users into the area. Based on this, an exception may be made to the setback requirements from restricted zoning districts. Additionally, Telecom concluded that Verizon's proposed design generally conforms to the city's design standards due to the vent style concealment, which mimics other pipe vents on the rooftop of this building. To mitigate impacts of the use on surrounding commercial uses and neighbors, the planning commission may condition the application related to the location, design, maintenance, and operation of the proposal. Planning commission may require redesign or relocation of the facility and may also direct the applicant to resubmit a revised proposal for further consideration. The planning commission, however, may not deny the application based on environmental effects of radio frequency emissions per Section 332(c) of the Communications Act. So there were two minor changes to the conditions that were distributed. First, number four should say "mixed-use" building instead of "commercial" building. And then condition sixteen, right now it says the permit shall be valid for a period of five years. State law requires a minimum of ten years, so that was changed as well. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve Application 15198 based on the following conditions and findings of approval. That's the end of my presentation. The applicant is here, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? No? Uh, with that, I'd kind of like to speak.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jay Grundle. I'm the site acquisition consultant for Verizon Wireless. Uh, I'm with a company called On Air LLC. I want to thank, um, Ryan for the, uh, presentation of the project and the, um, all the help he's given us along the way. So the application before you, um, is to construct and operate a new, uh, small cell Verizon wireless facility on the rooftop of an existing building. The design includes one two-foot cantenna concealed with a faux roof vent and a curved hood to mimic other, uh, type appurtenances in the area. The dimensions of the screening element are eighteen inches wide, uh, and twenty-four inches tall. The overall height of the attachment will be twenty-seven and a half feet above ground level. This is approximately two feet higher than the top of the parapet wall. The screening element will be painted to match similar roof appurtenances in the area, and all ancillary equipment will be placed on the roof and won't be visible from ground level. We believe that we've demonstrated three very critical factors that would allow the commission to grant an exception to the setback restrictions described in the staff report. The first is, um, as Telecom Law Firm, um, confirmed, we have established a substantially, uh, we've established that we have a substantial gap in service in that area, uh, excuse me, in Verizon's network. Second, there are no alternative locations that exist that would both satisfy the intended service area, um, for the facility while at the same time remaining outside of those restricted setbacks from the coastline and residential districts. And third, that any visual impacts, uh, from the new facility are mitigated by the proposed concealment design with the antenna placed in the faux roof vent and no other equipment visible from ground level. Finally, we have reviewed all of the conditions of approval, and should the planning commission approve the project and the application, we are prepared to comply with all of those conditions. And, um, I'm available to answer any questions, and I'd also like to invite Raj Mathor from Hammett and Edison, um, up here to just briefly address issues regarding, um, RF emissions and FCC compliance. So, Raj?
Okay, any questions from Mr. Grundle?
Yeah.
I have some questions, but I'm not sure exactly who they need to get addressed to.
Okay, well, we'll ask them and see who.
Um, regarding the Appleton plug on the front of the building and the generator that would be used, um, in the event we have more than four hours of power down? I would like to see dimensional information, um, about the plug itself and how far it sticks out into the sidewalk and how big the generator would be and where it would sit. I, I think he indicated it would be in a parking place.
Yeah, so, um, what, what you, what you find with a lot of, uh, larger macro facilities that Verizon installs and other carriers install, uh, the macro facility that covers a, uh, excuse me, a broader range of territory, those are the more important, critical sites to a, to a carrier's network. And so those are generally given priority to have backup power in the event of prolonged outages so that there is at least coverage in, in large areas. Because this site is capacity-driven, um, the, the Appleton plug and the ability to, to bring in a temporary generator, um, could probably be considered a luxury item for this particular site. And so the, um, basically how, how those Appleton plugs work is that when there's a prolonged power outage and Verizon feels the need to deploy those temporary generators, they will wheel them out. And in this case, it would be, it's basically a, a small trailer-type generator that can be pulled with a, an automobile. It's not a large, I, I don't know the exact dimensions, uh, right now. But, um, they would deploy to put it in one of the metered spaces on the street and then cable it over to the, um, to the Appleton plug. And the Appleton plug is probably, it's, you know, it's a, it's probably about that, that wide, and it would be, it's sort of like a, um, a hose nozzle kind of thing, in that, that range. It wouldn't protrude out into the sidewalk, um, at all, and it would be, um, again, only used during, um, emergencies if, if Verizon chose to deploy the generator.
Do you know the amperage of the proposed Appleton plug?
Um, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Did you have some information you want to share, Senator?
Yeah, I just wanted to have Raj...
Okay.
...address our emissions real quick.
Hi, good evening. My name is Raj Mathor. I'm with Hammett and Edison. Uh, we are an independent consulting engineering firm located up in Sonoma, uh, and I am a licensed professional electrical engineer in the state of California. Uh, we evaluated the site for radio frequency exposure compliance with the FCC standard. Um, if I find that the site will comply with the FCC public limits, uh, the maximum calculated RF exposure level, uh, anywhere at ground or at any of the nearby buildings is nine-point-one percent of the FCC limit, uh, which means that the levels are about ten times below the FCC limits. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
That'd be the same, um, as the, the exposure to the residential unit that's directly beneath the antenna, did, did you measure that?
Uh, yeah, those, the exposure levels below the antennas are actually lower. The antennas are, um, are directional in nature. Uh, so what that means is that the energy, uh, that comes out of the antennas is directed and is not equal in all directions. And the way it's directed is it's kind of a narrow beam going out towards the horizon. So if you look at it from Verizon's point of view, they want to get the signal out to be covered. They don't want it going straight down. So that's one factor. The other factor is that, uh, initially, this is for the most part a line-of-sight technology, and so the building material actually severely attenuates the signals. And so the exposure levels on top-floor buildings, uh, is generally about one or two percent of the FCC limit. Does that answer your question?
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Raj. I think that's it. This time we'll open up to the public if there's someone I'd like to, uh, come up and speak.
Hi, my name is Peter Wilk. I, uh, live on Fanmar, and I have, my view outside my window and my balcony is the rooftops of the village. And, uh, I was just listening to this, um, description of the vent cover and the, the way they're trying to disguise this antenna. And to me, uh, it's, it's totally unnecessary. I can't imagine a, a vent cover being any more desirable than a bare antenna. So as far as someone who's probably going to be staring at this, um, I'd just assume they don't bother with that disguise.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? Marilyn, are you?
Ryan, could you please read that section that tells about, uh, I learned of, uh, section seven oh four of the Telecommunications Act? You read just a little bit. There's about several sentences. Could you read that for us, please?
You, you know what, Marilyn? We're not, th- this is an opportunity for, to have them do, if you have, if you want to state your opinion, we'd be happy to...
I just want a clarification because it says, and I wanted the correct wording, which he has in his staff report. It seems like a reasonable request.
Let's see if we can, uh, Paul, did you, you have that document there that...
I can repeat what was in my presentation, but in terms of, I don't have the actual Telecommunications Act on me.
I was just...
It's okay. Well, it sounds like you have a point to make, so why don't you just get to the point with what you have?
Basically, part of what it says is that you will not refuse placement of wireless facilities based upon environmental effects so long as FCC emission levels are not exceeded. There are many reports of the levels being exceeded that has been presented to you before. In terms of significant gaps, I question the proof of that. And the discussion here about the appearance reminds me, if you were talking about a cigarette company, um, having their smoke, uh, cigarette toxins constantly, constantly, would you only talk about how it looks or the packaging or the cigarettes? The point is, there's proof of the harmful nature, whether it's whatever levels, those safe levels have been, um, determined. In fact, there's a report I'll leave you with. This is an official U.S. National Toxicology Program that last week issued this report of a, I think it's twenty-four million-dollar study, and basically says, "Major U.S. government study finds cellphone radiation causes cancer." And this is, uh, the same type of radiation as in other wireless devices. And basically, they, and I'm going to leave this with you, um, they took groups of rats, and they exposed them to low-level radiation in part. The rats exposed developed, I think one out of twelve approximately, brain and heart tumors, carcin, some comas. The unexposed rats, none of them got sick. Now, part of the report that I've seen in the staff report and from these Verizon representatives comes from the electrical, it's called the Institute for Electrical and Electronics Engineers, who often say, "There's no problem with this." Well, after the report came out, I think it was May twenty-fifth, here's what they say. They released a statement with comments from Ken Foster of the IEE Committee that reviews radio frequency exposure limits. With the, and National Toxicology Program study results, Foster expects more governments to put out cautionary guidelines and radiation labeling for cellphones. He says he wouldn't be surprised if, if California adds radio frequency radiation to its Proposition sixty-five list of carcinogenic chemicals. And at the IARC, that's International Agency for Research on Cancer, ups its classification from "to be possible carcinogenic to humans" to "to a probable carcinogenic to humans," quote, and that's the last sentence. And they wouldn't be out of line in doing... And they wouldn't be out of line in doing that, he says. This is going to change the rhetoric in the field. People can point to much more hard evidence that cellphone radio frequency exposure really is a problem. And with this report out, and I'm going to leave you some literature, I think you need to look at this and delay any kind of approval of this. And it's also involuntary exposure of everyone. It's not just looking at a garage or an awning, as you've discussed in your previous part of the agenda here. And if you could see what's happening visually to the cellular impact on our bodies, it would look quite ugly. Here's what I'm leaving you. And the other point you said, a sentence about, no, let's see what this is. Staff did not determine any negative environmental impacts. There's no substantiation or elaboration on what staff did. But there is evidence from documents like this one, "Mobile Communications: The Cause for the Global Decline of the Bees." There's a publication, "Bees, Birds, and Man, the Strong Nature," by Elektro Swang, by Warren Key, translated from the German. So to say there are no environmental impacts is a false statement, unfortunately. So I'm going to leave you this very recent report from the National Toxicology Program.
Thank you, Marilyn. You can just leave them with Linda right there.
And I'll see what else. And also, there's hundreds of 20 million, I think, cellular sites across the country. Verizon has hundreds of them in our county. I have a list of sites from the county from 2007. They need to update it. So I'll leave you a little packet for each. If you could please pass them out, I'd appreciate that. This should either be continued or denied, in my opinion.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak tonight? Okay.
Here's a fact.
Thank you. Thanks, Linda. Can I just state your name and sign in if you would?
My name is Randall Tyler, and...
I'm here because we received a notice for the hearing outside. My mom spends most of her time over in South Santa Clara Valley, and she received the notice oh, several weeks ago. And I just got mine about two days ago, but I did have a little advance notice that my mom expressed concern about this. She's a cancer patient, and we're treating, keeping a recent case of cancer in remission. And she expressed concern about the cell tower being placed where it is. The previous speaker here about the federal issue of not being able to act on environmental concerns, I don't necessarily agree with. It seems like that that's something that's not within our control here, is that you had to also modify the five- to 10-year permitting. What seems more immediate to me is that our own regulations here about how close we allow these sources to residential areas, which we are one of those. It's right in the front window of our house up on Prospect Avenue. I haven't exactly measured it, but it's oh, about 300 feet. I'm not sure if it's too close to us within our own personal or our own city regulations here about the offsets for such installations, but it's right there. And I came to the meeting tonight to find out what's going on here, listen to what you have. So this occurs to me right now. I'm here on behalf of my mom. If there's anything that I can do that would affect the outcome of her condition, how well she does, then it's, I find it necessary for me to come and do whatever I can or affect the situation in any way that I can. And I don't think, in my opinion, that it's a good thing to be giving a variance on something as basic as our regulations and other regulations, this reflected, I'm sure, in a lot of other communities, on how close you really want to put one of these things next to where people live on a continuous basis. And so I'm of the opinion that I don't think we should permit the variance necessary in our own regulations to put that there for safety reasons. And I've had a lot of other experience over the years here and in the valley and stuff, and we've had difficulties with cell sites. And a lot of people have reported problems with them and stuff. That's basically what I'm here to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler.
Upon hearing this, just spending this little time here, that's what occurs to me the most, is that we do have some regulations here. Maybe we should just stick with them at this time, if we can.
All right.
I think it would be the better thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one more speaker.
My name is Sylvia Skefich. Let me just write that down. I'm a doctor of chiropractic, and I've come across this study, this government recent study associating cancer with this type of frequency, and that concerns me. There's a lot of things that concern me about this. I started being very concerned when a new cell tower in a redundant area by Verizon was due to go in to just a couple blocks from my office on 41st Avenue. That's still in the works. I find it that Verizon is a very aggressive company wanting to put cell towers in redundant areas where they project more use, not where it's needed yet, where there are childcare facilities at Spa Fitness right next door. I'm getting, this is just background for a second, and now in a coastal zone where there's not enough offset. In this documentation that I find here at this facility, it says the planning commission may not deny an application based on environmental factors, but it goes on to say, "To the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions." Well, it's not complying. The offset is not there for the ocean, for the beach and the public area. So it's, you can't say that you can't deny this based on environmental considerations because it states right here that as long as they're in compliance, you can't deny them. Well, they're not in compliance automatically because the offset's not there. Maybe I'm misreading that, but it just seems logical to me. To go on with what I want to say, some of the statements I want to say because I feel so strongly about this as a citizen with environmental, with EMF sensitivities that impact my life significantly, that I feel strongly enough about the aggressiveness of Verizon towers going in, that I have contacted CellDEF. This is a community environmental legal defense nonprofit, and they help citizens come together with democracy for their own democratic rights to protect themselves against whatever they need to protect themselves against. So I've contacted them, and we'll see what happens there. I also plan to get an audience with my congressional representative to see what can be done about limiting cell tower coverage. There's, I know there's some laws regarding this, but they're lenient and they're not, they don't cover things like, what about the children facilities? I know there's things around schools. What about the childcare facilities like at Spa Fitness on 41st? What about when there's public outcry against the cell towers? Is that going to have any say in the matter? What about if there's natural environments and coastal zones? I think this needs to be put into laws that we can follow. Just in reading this, I'm seeing several questionable things. I'm not prepared to speak to them, but some of the reports are based on proprietary information, so it's not even known what's in the Verizon studies that show that they need this. And there may be one other thing that I want to say. Oh, about the rooftop thing and exceeding the limit, it says, "As long as it's not intended for commercial purposes or habitation." Well, this is commercial purposes. Verizon is doing this for money. They're paying rent to the facility below. It's commercial purposes, and they will be exceeding it. So it seems like they shouldn't be allowed to put the tower above that legal limit because it is for commercial purposes. And then what about the mixed-use building? Does that mean there's residents inside of some of these frontage properties there? I don't know. Like at Mr. Toots' or at Margaritaville, I don't know if there's residents living in there as well. But if they are, that would be a concern to me, based on me feeling it and knowing that it's a problem. Me being the Canary and the Colmite, I want to protect my people, and I'm going to do what I can to do it. So I'm just telling Verizon that even if you guys don't put up a big fight, and I sure hope you do, and I really applaud this city council, Capitol City Council for speaking their mind when they did, even if that doesn't go over, that there's other people who may need to do more against having cell tower coverage all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else that would like to speak tonight? Okay. If not, I'm seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I have one question.
Okay.
So it's my understanding the height limit in the village is 27 feet. So if this did go in, it's not exceeding the height limit in the village, so it doesn't need any kind of variance from height?
So the proposal is slightly over the 20, so the top of the new cantina would be 27 feet 5 inches, if I'm reading that correctly? So it would be slightly over the top of the building, but that's when I brought up the height exception allowances?
But that's if you encase it, right? Put the, make it look like a vent?
Oh, so you're saying if it was just the wireless antenna, it would apply to both? I can, I'll get the specific section of the code, and I can read it to you?
No, I know what the code says. What I'm asking is, maybe I'm incorrect. I thought you said that they're going to put a screening around it to make it look like a vent and put a top on it. My question is, does it exceed the 27 feet if they don't put the screening in the top on it?
I would ask that the applicant answer that question. I'm not sure how much room there is in between the antennas and the top of the faux vent.
So the cantina by itself is two feet by 18 inches, and... And the top of the building parapet is 24 feet 10 inches. So it would be 26 feet 10 inches if there was no screening element added to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Follow that up. What is the staff's response to the point that was made that this is a commercial use, so the exception doesn't apply?
So the way staff read that was that, and I'd like to grab the actual code section so that I'm reading it verbatim. So roof structures for the housing of elevators, stairways, ventilating fans, or similar equipment required to operate and maintain the building, chimneys, smoke stacks, radio aerials, television antennas, and utility structures, and necessary mechanical appurtenances may be built to exceed the height limit established for the district in which the structures are located, provided, however, that no such utility structure or roof structure in excess of the allowed building height shall be used for commercial purposes or habitation. The way that planning staff read that was like a rooftop deck, as, you know, that would be above the allowed height, and it's actually being habitated and used as commercial space versus renting out room for an antenna.
Right. Because a vent for a restaurant that exceeds the height limit, I mean, that's for commercial purposes because that allows the restaurant to have a kitchen.
This one is specifically as, I mean, I think that's a valid point. This is specifically being rented.
For commercial purposes?
To look at the facility there. Seems like a commercial purpose to me.
In the list, it lists off end utility structures. So in looking at the list where this is a utility...
So that'd be like a PG&E drop, right?
Yeah, to have PG&E on, or Verizon in this situation where...
They don't pay, but they don't pay to put the PG&E there. PG&E doesn't, that's the difference.
And within that, "In excess of the allowable building height shall be used for commercial purposes or habitation." In our reading of that, it was actually space that can be utilized for commercial space or habitation, which is occupied. So that was our take on it. But I understand.
So this is specific to height. So if the representative from Verizon is correct, and it's at 26 feet 10 inches without the faux cover, they would still be outside of this exception here, correct?
So then it would be, it would be our conditioning if they put the faux vent on it, it would be because we tell them they have to, and therefore, that would sort of be creating our own exception.
Any more discussion or questions for staff?
I did read the telecom report a little bit differently than the staff did in that they, it seemed to me that they were recommending more studies in their report. I mean, it was kind of thick, the analysis, let me put it that way, if anybody else...
The wording, yeah, the wording is very, well, it's thick, but the wording is very vague, too. It's likely that they would need this.
Yeah. Telecom is candidly, and from my experience, they like to request a lot of extra work, particularly as it goes to RF emissions that we don't feel is appropriate, given our limitations to consider those issues.
So I have some comments I'd like to make if there's no more discussion from the commission.
Okay.
I came up with a long list of questions after reading the whole report and knowing that we've discussed this a couple of different times on a couple of different sites. And I have one issue, and it has to do with this Appleton plug and the generator. I Googled Appleton plugs. I'm not an electrician, but I Googled them, and I looked at the little thing that was on the drawing, and I tried to match it up with what I saw online. And I did speak with a couple of electricians, trying to understand, you know, is this a six-inch out? Is it a four-inch out? It's not a flat plug, that's for sure. And what I understand is that depending on the amperage, it could be four inches or it could be bigger than that. I didn't get anybody to tell me it could be smaller than that. And I walked the wall, and there are a couple of things that come out and point down, and they look like vents to me. They might be plugs, and I just don't recognize that. But they are intrusive to some degree.
But they are intrusive to some degree. A generator being placed down there and taking up a parking place, if we've got more than four hours of power outage, that means all your restaurants are closed, all your retail businesses are closed, and you put this generator out there to keep the wireless service going to the beach, that it doesn't seem to me like it's a good thing to do. So if it's a luxury item, I'd like to see that go away. If it, if it doesn't go away, I'd like to see them find a way to make that generator up there on the roof somewhere or out in the alley, so it's not right out there in, in front of the building. That's an issue that I have.
Can we stick with that one for a second?
Sure.
Because I'm not following you. If all the restaurants are closed, why are you concerned about one parking space being used?
Because the beach is still open. I mean, locals can still go down and enjoy being at the bandstand or, or, you know, doing other things down in that area.
Yeah, my, my concern about the generator wouldn't be so much that it's taking up one parking space. It would be more of an issue of noise. You know, because typically, when we've had people put in emergency generators in various commercial applications, one of the things we do is have them do some sound proofing around the generator, so, you know, it doesn't, it isn't a noise problem, particularly if it's going to run into the night. So I sort of agree with Commissioner Smith. I, I think since they've indicated it's not an absolute necessity, it's more sort of a luxury item, perhaps the generator could go away, or it could be placed on the roof and put in some sort of na, noise-controlled environment.
And my issue is really with the plug itself. I, I disagree with the, the note that it would not be visually intrusive. I think it'll be ugly and intrusive, stick out into the sidewalk. The other, the other issues that I brought up and had some discussion about in the report that's different from other ones that I think I've looked at, there are multiple sites that are in the plan. And I think, looking at all of those sites, the one thing that came to my mind is that we're talking about a, a private property where a private owner has agreed or is in the midst of agreeing to allow this to be put on his site. One of the sites that they listed is the Capitol Library, which would not be on private property. And I think that we would have the ability to deny such a thing on our own property. And, and I just want to put that out there because I'd really like to review that and make sure that we understand with all of the other limitations that we've got, if Verizon wants to put a tower on our own property, do we have more control or more say in approving or denying that?
Well, wasn't there an application to put one here on City Hall?
Yeah, if the property owner doesn't cooperate, then they have no project. So it wouldn't even go to a hearing. I think we'd simply say, "We're not interested in doing business with you." Thank you very much.
Okay. Then it might be wise of us at this point, since it's listed in the report already, to, to send some indication back that, that we might as well not even bring that one before this body, at least.
I don't think we should address that at this time.
Okay.
Okay, any, are we done? Sorry, those are your comments?
Yeah, other than that, I, it's, it's a federal law that says we are limited in what we can consider. It's, and the United States is a, a country of laws, so to ask us to go against that law and not do our due diligence here in reviewing this. Cosmetically, I don't care if there's a vent hood on it or not. If the height is an issue, then keep it below the height and leave it the way it is. We've had one resident say that he's going to be staring at it, and it's fine with him. When I looked at the drawings, the faux vent doesn't make that much cosmetic difference, and I don't think it's going to be intrusive visually in the location that they're proposing. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And I do think that on this particular application, you know, there, there is recourse beyond the planning commission, which is the city council, and also it's appealable to the coastal commission after it goes to the council. Is that correct?
Which question for staff? Yeah.
Because I, you know, as, as a planning commissioner, I do think it's important that, that we follow what the laws are. And, you know, unfortunately, they're pretty clear. I don't personally think they're absolutely fair, or that's the way that it should be, but currently it is, and, you know, it's nice to hear that some people are going to go talk to their, you know, federal representatives, their congress members, and talk about getting the law changed, because right now our hands are pretty much tied to the factors that we can and cannot consider on this application. And I, I think that's where we are.
Commissioner Newer, or go ahead, Commissioner Teese.
I have some questions for staff about the, the part of it. I, I do agree with Commissioner Westman about the, the federal jurisdiction part of it, and I want to find out why staff recommended approval when you made, you know, such a point of the, our, is it our ordinances or just the guideline about the, within 1,000 feet of the coastline and 300 feet of a residence? Is that, that, those are in our ordinances?
Yes.
So what, you're going, your, your actual recommendation is going against our ordinances? And so my question is, why, why would you do that?
So this is a case where we have an ordinance that predates a lot of the FCC regulations that have been passed subsequently that further restrict our ability to restrict the location of where cell facilities may be located. So I think, as Ryan touched on during his presentation, we're precluded from denying a carrier for providing a facility if they can demonstrate that there's a significant gap in coverage and that they provide that facility in the least intrusive means possible. So that's what we looked at, and given the federal law trumps our local ordinance, that's the basis of our recommendation.
Thank you.
So I, I think I'd like to see it stay within the height limitation if that's acceptable to others. I, I tend to agree with the neighbor who said that the...
I agree.
The natural antenna is just as good as the faux one, if not better.
Yes.
So it, it's within the height limit, so with that, I'm fine. And I, I'm also okay with, if we eliminate the plug.
I, I don't really have an issue with the plug. I mean, in emergencies, there's always a communications gap, it seems like, but I'll go with the wishes of the rest of the commission. I, I think one of the other things that's, was pointed out by the Verizon is that they are also a very good lobbyist, and so our hands are tied here, and I think really the recourse is, is at more at the federal level. So our, our hands are pretty much tied, and it gives us a direction to go, and I think for me, I just have to look at the staff recommendation and the, point out that there are a peer process after the planning commission gets done, and that's with our city council. So either way, I think it'll probably end up there regardless of our direction tonight. So I think if everyone spoke, I'll just ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, if that's okay. I'll try and formulate one.
Okay, sure.
And that will be that we approve the application for the installation of the antenna without the faux chimney, and that unless the facility for a backup generator can be moved such that there's not a plug on the front of the building, that it be eliminated from the approval.
And I, can I amend, ask you to amend that and say that if it is, if the backup generator is relocated somewhere else, that it will come back to staff, and they can look at requiring some noise attenuation around the generator itself to meet our noise standards?
Yes, that the, the community development director can approve that. Just, will accept that amendment?
Okay, we have a minute of motion, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion of second, and do we have any more discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It looks like it's passed. Okay, that brings us to item six, the director's report.
No report this evening, thank you.
And any more commissioner comments on item seven? And we'll ask for adjournment, and then we'll see you at our special meeting on June 13th.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30?
Monday.
Very good. Thank you.
16?
13.
13, oh. I'll move for adjournment. Check, I brought my, I actually brought my calendar this time. Oh, I just said, all right, good. And we're not meeting that Thursday night either?